Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Lord, please bless all who are assembled and help us make the decision down in the room.
I don't care. Allow nothing.
President.
The first order of business tonight will be site time review 25-01 continuous. So do you have your approvals remain done?
Yes.
So, everything's turned into them. I'm waiting for my insurance bond and but I did have them send over a thing saying that they're good to go, that we don't have to do the turn lane or that they're gonna require a study area, so we're good to go.
You have any more current plans? I mean, did they redraw anything?
Yes, and everything was sent over to the town engineer and he okayed it. He had some concerns about the sewer lateral and some exterior stuff, but that's what we're going for, a variance for. And as far as the sewer lateral, he's wanting where he's wanting us to go, we'd have to dig down nine feet into the road to do that sewer lateral, so we're just gonna go ahead and connect to the one, he just asked that we do some cleanouts.
Well, there are two levels on that property, so you're gonna eliminate one.
Yes.
That chaw is good with that building only having one John Masserdale sewer in there.
That has not been addressed.
Okay. All right. What about the exit onto Terrace Drive? Is that gonna be where the driveway to that residential property used to be?
So, it is proposed, I guess I should focus on here.
It is proposed to be west of the old existing. And we have asked our engineer to look into doing it, moving it to the east, so it's not going into the
Right, this is the way this holds.
The windows. We have asked that. Now, that's gonna be something that's gonna be proposed to NDOT.
Like, I don't know if there has to be so many feet off the road or anything like that, but
On to Terrace for it, it wouldn't be as easy to for exiting, but
We did ask them and they are looking into it. I went over and measured it to see how many feet down, so that way she could
Well, I mean, it's an existing, there's an existing drive.
Correct.
Yes, underneath that, grass and hot mess over there. Yeah, there's some gravel underneath there.
Right, so I mean, if that existing drive could be used
And that's what, and that's what we're gonna try to do.
As much as
The only thing we could say is the, if NDOT has some sort of pushback and not due to the distance off of State Road, that would be the only, the only issue.
Well, but that already existed before.
Yeah, it was a residential
Yeah. It's still a curb pattern, yeah.
No, I don't think
There's no curb pattern. There's no curb. We will
Oh, well, we're talking about ladder. Never mind. There is
We will be creating a curb. I don't even think there's a scoreboard under that
There is not.
It's flat there.
There is. It is.
And so, if you move it to the west, to the east, how far will it have to be to the west? So, where it's at, I think, I think you have room to move it to the west and still not invade.
Where it is currently is
It's more west as it can. He's talking about
It is the farthest to the west as we could, and it's just off of the buffer that we have on the backside, because it is, it is the straight shot out the back. Your current plans do show it. But we're trying to move it because it is, when coming off that property, it would be shining headlights into a residential
Right.
And honestly, something that we never even thought about, or we would have addressed it a long time ago, would have knocked on her door, until she came in here and brought it up, I also, and that's, I mean, completely accident.
But when you're doing your drive-through anyways, and when you're coming around, even if you did move it east to where it is sitting right up there, that would keep those headlights from going there, and then we're just taking them out there.
Right, this doesn't show where we're actually at.
You brought yourself, yeah.
Far west. He's talking about moving it up here.
Um, those were
There's a way down originally and
Who would pass them back? I remember that.
Some, some
I kept mine too.
So, yeah, I remember some people kept them. I didn't remember them. So, the existing, the existing driveway is literally here. It's not, it's not very full, but
Right, well, the existing driveway almost shines on that little white house at the corner.
The existing driveway actually goes right through shit.
In between the
I literally was parked in it the other day, like, if I was gonna pull out, it's kinda like worker's little shed building is, like, that's what it would be based on, a little more hour.
Right, so
That might be ideal.
Need to try to avoid
I am trying to.
Where are you going?
We've already been asked to do that. We just willing to do it because, so here's the previous one. So, it's like, this is the old one right now, and it's like, where that is, it's like, here's our little barn thing.
Right, so it doesn't shine on anything if you leave or the existing drive is.
Which is what I have Tabitha, our engineer, working on and making, seeing as she can.
Because right now, it's literally, it's coming out right here, right next to the mailbox.
Right.
And it goes right
Which is, that way they don't have to then turn and then go, it was just a flow of the traffic better that way. That's why
The only thing I worry about with is the flow of traffic as they're leaving.
Right.
Is, is, is obviously being of the static, static cars there. This, and this little dog is, is something that, I mean, it would be, it's in, it's to be a
Unless that wasn't investigated the other way.
And we talked about doing that.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, I mean, yeah, but then you'd have to come around here and then go back here, and then the only one way you could go would be going out, because you'd go, no left turn, and then we keep, yeah, people going.
About even bringing everyone in, but, yeah, I mean, it just
Yeah, no, I know what you're saying.
We're also, our hours are gonna be like 10:00 AM, maybe 11:00 AM to like 9:00 PM. So, it's not even gonna be dark by the time it is going
In the summer.
It's seasonal.
Our opening hour would be like 10 or 11:00 AM, and then we'd be closed at 9:00 PM.
That's just what I asked her, because during the, during the summer, it's not
It would probably be 10:00 PM, honestly, possibly. I don't, I mean
There's an hour there.
But even at that, 10:30 less, I was working to reach this out.
Are you, is it coming year-round?
Yes.
I can't always say that warm sometime in the winter or before winter.
Um, I'm thinking like
So, the way we're, we're
April 8th?
Yeah, well, we, we go like what we're trying to go at. It's not very that same bridge. So, we're talking October, March. Is, 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 yes. Halloween is, is the end of
Right, and
So, Easter to Halloween?
Right now, it's staying daylight till after nine.
So
It's gonna be like that till the middle of July.
Well, I mean, I'd be more comfortable if we could get that exit to be closer where the residential drive was. But NDOT has to weigh in on that because of the backup.
Of course, according to your capacity.
So, are we open, is our public hearing open or is it just, is the public hearing open?
Yeah, this is the continuous.
I would like to hear what her concerns are.
Or about her
Yeah, I'd like to hear what she wants to say. Because I feel like we're addressing it and I don't know her side.
They were up first.
Oh, I thought they, yeah, they were
She's got a letter. So, those are, that's the main concern for me, and I mean, to be honest with you, regardless of how many places that you have a backup on Terrace Drive, people are gonna turn right, they're gonna go through that housing addition to exit. If they can't turn left, because cars are backed up, they're going right.
So, when we turn this commercial, why wasn't that addressed then?
Well
I mean, traffic was gonna be an issue with having two entrance, an entrance and an exit when we turn commercial. It was the same streets. Nothing's changed. I'm concerned. I don't understand it. It doesn't make sense to me.
That was just, that was a rezone to, from residential to commercial, and I don't know.
And hasn't Monrovia kinda taken that whole road?
Yeah, it's very much
Commercial hall, so
Right, it is. I mean, it's a future land use.
But honestly, I feel like, I see what you're saying, but all you, oh, when you ask for a zoning change, you get a zoning change. We, we don't have any idea what your building or your parking or your traffic flows is gonna look like or what kind of
I've always said ice cream shop.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, but we're talking about moving your driveway four to six feet, and how are we to know that this would be a concern for the neighbor? I mean, like, there's chicken and the egg. I mean, obviously, we're, we're okay with a commercial business going, and we're just trying to work out the logistics.
I mean, had somebody came to me, I definitely would have already addressed this a long time ago. So, since this came up, I have talked to our engineer, and like I said, just like the other day, two, three days ago, I went over there and measured it off and everything. I marked it on the maps and it over to her, and she's, so I am, I am trying.
No, yeah, and I'd like to say I am not a fan of moving the drive, the drive-through, because I hundred percent think we oughta just go straight out versus jog around. So, that's why I wanted to hear her side and kinda get an idea. I read the letter from her.
The, the, okay, I mean, in the minutes, I'm just saying, we addressed a lot of this at the minute's last, at the last meeting as well.
We heard about it.
Yeah.
So, realistically, we're just asking for this to be okay, so then we can do the BZA and everything, so I don't, I don't know what else to do.
Right, and you have a whole couple of pages of BZA.
And it's mainly like cosmetic things, like, you know, light fixtures. We're not trying to blind all the neighbors, so we really just wanna do lights on the blink, because it's stuff like that. It's nothing
I mean, if we give you a tentative approval, it will be, I'll have the NDOT permit and have to address all of the, the BZA issues
Correct.
To do with the UDL.
I just don't wanna send out all that and then maybe something else, because it seems to keep on coming.
All the questions I have for them right now. Anyone else? We made, we made question this
That's fine.
So, there's the
Darling, what?
Who did these out?
Oh, okay. My concern is, I'm at the meeting for rezoning in July of 2021. And I listened to Mr. Larson talk about they wanted it rezoned from R6 to NC, about it would draw very few customers from outside the neighborhood boundary, and that it would enhance the property and the property value. And Mr. Inglis said that they intended on putting a small ice cream shop, like the Dairy Castle in Greencastle. And it was addressed that there was a letter sent about a fence. That was me. And it was approved with no opposition. I didn't have a problem with a small ice cream shop, because I had decisions that I had to make that, that would be impacted what they did with that. I was retiring in 2022, and if they put some big thing there, I was leaving. But a small ice cream shop, I could deal with. So, I decided to stay, renovate my home, $100,000 in renovation, and now we have a strip mall. And they wanna talk about the ice cream shops closed, open from 10:00 to 9:00. What about these other two businesses? And then where they have located that driveway is totally across from me, my living room, the lights constant, from dusk till close, or whatever these other people are open, is in my face, invading me and my privacy. Like I mentioned before, my daughter, last year granddaughter, was diagnosed with epilepsy. She does not need these lights. Either that or don't stay the cram up. But the fact that I changed the building is what I'm upset over.
Well, I don't know
To me, it's unethical.
I mean, it's, technically, really, it's not a strip mall. I mean, the, the other two businesses, you don't intend them to be retail.
So, there are A lot of traffic.
But it's a single standalone building, and that's reason I asked for the fence along the front of me.
As of right now, we're talking to a homeless cabinet company. That way, the one side with us doing a display in, I mean, that's gonna be like a daytime, it's not gonna be a 10:00, 10:00 PM place, and you're not gonna have a whole lot of people in that. We talked about putting our office in the other side. We, we have three to five customers.
But there was no discussion about two other businesses at the original rezoning. This, this stuff impacts people's lives.
I have to be able to pay for the building too, so I'm like hoping that brings in some acting.
Well, I should have had the opportunity to make a decision on what I was doing with my property. You know where I live. I wasn't invading. You know where I live. I wasn't invading. I think every letter.
It is really pretty. I, I thought it was because you had a fire or something.
No.
It looks really, really pretty.
It's because this is where I plan to do my twilight years. I wanted it to where it was almost maintenance free. Because I didn't want to be bothered. And I stuck some of my retirement pet money in it.
Well, I, I would like to say, you know, this, the job is kind of hard because we have to try to, you know, take the best work. And I can understand the lights coming into your house would definitely be something that would be irritating. But also I do believe that the two office spaces, you know, it's more of like a doctor's office, not a strip mall. You know, it gets a little office sweet. And I, I, I mean, just like trying to find the middle ground between the two of you, I, I do not really think that it's going to look or have the kind of traffic of a strip mall.
It'll be a nice place. We, before we have to.
And I don't doubt that.
You guys are planning on putting a water bed in here or anything, are you? See, I, 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 yeah, that's what I'm saying.
If they move the driveway back to where its original stop was. And then put a fence, just the petition from there down, because I don't know where these parking spaces are going to be. That's going to be people parked eating ice cream like they're in the drive-in movie looking in my house. I mean, I don't think happy with that.
They buy ice cream at Subway and nobody ever buys it. I don't think it'll be quite as busy as what you expected, but I do appreciate your concerns because I would be concerned too.
Well, when they were talking, if I may, when they were talking about using the same egress from the, from, from their plan right now, it would be further, it would be going further east. So they would be using the original. And that doesn't leave out a whole lot of extra parking spaces and they would all be east of that anyway. So.
Well, if there wasn't any.
I think, I don't think there's going to be anything there that would be in front of your houses.
Then I wouldn't get with that.
Something else we need to tell our engineer is if we can't move that, could possibly be a struggle. That's true for you people point out. So we were talking about using our green space that we have to put in and put some sort of shrubbery.
Along there.
That is, that light height to try to help block.
And I think.
Can to try and eliminate this issue. We really love.
And I appreciate that because I, I am upset, was upset.
And, and I can.
A hundred thousand dollars upset.
I honestly, I avoid to come off you, Tiffany, I love you, but. But I'm just overstep boundaries and I understand that this is now a situation and I don't want to set you in your hand. I mean, you have a providing, yes, I did, I do. This is important. We can come to a level where we can figure out a way to, to.
And I, and I agree with that.
I, I have a question here. All right, if N dot will not allow them to move that drive to where the residence drive was, would to them perhaps putting a fence somewhere in the area to block what?
Just like shrubbery or something to that.
Stone looking vinyl fence. I mean, it's a real nice.
Vinyl fence?
Well, you know, the, the.
I like my vinyl fence. Thank you.
Oh, do you have that? Okay, I'm sorry. We're not in front of your house, though. I don't think you want.
But even if they did not allow you to move that, you are still putting that driveway right in front of my, or almost directly in front of my driveway.
Uh, actually, it's offset from that. Do you guys have a, if you have a.
Is it west, east a little bit from my driveway? The old one or the new one?
Well, if he goes ahead and moves it, I don't know.
No, I know where the old one is.
How about moving it?
Trying to see if that.
You show her.
But he was saying if they would not.
Yeah. No, then that's. Then we're back to square one, I guess, aren't we?
And just circling it out, back out thirty nine is not an option?
I don't think it's a great option because then we've got old people trying to go through the, um, parking lot where everybody's trying to pull out parking spaces. I think that I don't think the drive through staying straight would be best. And I, so that's my opinion. I'm going back out because it really.
The only way to, if, the way I see it, if they cannot move farther east and they have to stay west, the only way to alleviate the headlight issue under her property would make that a right turn only exit. And they would have to exit through the neighborhood. They could not turn left to go to forty two.
But just setting in that exit.
I think they just have a green space out here and just.
Well, if it's, it depends on far west. Because her, her garage is on the west and if. I'd have to see the plans better, but if they come straight behind the building off the drive through, straight to ladder, would that, is that lined up?
Last meeting that Darling said she wanted the fence.
Because if it's far enough, if it is far enough west.
And I asked Darling, she said, I haven't said nothing about fence.
Then that would not allow lights, headlights to be shining into her, her, by a left turn. That, that would be. Yep, then the living room and then, like I said, having right turn only. Yeah, but it. Yep. I know. So, I mean, you know, because, because the light issue, I mean, that's, like I said, that's, it's, without being able to utilize the original access, then it's difficult.
For that traffic to back up.
But if they keep it where the current one is, it just, it just hits that jet instead.
Right, if, if they can use the drive that was used.
That's right, exactly.
But is it, is it going to be, I mean, you know, how, how busy will it be? That's, you know, nobody, nobody can guess how busy it could be. Is it going to be as busy as thirteen in Mooresville? Or is it just going to be, you know, every ten, fifteen minutes a car coming through?
I mean, even at Dairy Castle in Mooresville, people are going through the drive through and people are maneuvering trying to get out. Well, I, I, what a person does.
Like a storefront and order, yeah.
If you guys want to have a meeting, you can come in anytime. Just let me know. If I sit in the break room, we can hire you guys.
I'm done if there's other questions.
Well, I do have a quick question. So if the drive through is, they're coming through and you are worried about the lights? And so we're going to have them turn, wouldn't the lights still come in right before they turn?
Turn from where?
So.
Yes, the light, if you're coming down.
You're about to say, when they come through the drive through and they're sitting there waiting for their food, their lights are going to be coming regardless of where the exit at.
I guess I assume the drive through was on the other side of the building, but it's not. It's at the back.
That they're going to order on the side of the building, correct? And they pick up in the back of the building, correct?
They'll park right here. That's the ice cream shop. They'll park right here, wait for their ice cream.
If you guys can use the original one, that'll, that'll alleviate that because then if people, when they're sitting there picking up, the lights won't be going into her exit. If you have some sort of block.
So then this is the ice cream shop here. They come in, over here, order, here's come around, stop and park right here. They have headlights.
Yeah.
For the headlights. Even if they turn here, they're hitting the, and they drive this way and they got turns to get the lights.
Unless they put a small fence. I mean, how much of that's the up, upset is where they could pull out and still see around.
The only, the only alleviation would be if it moved over that green space here, bushes.
Well, you said you also, you were, you didn't want anybody parked there looking at your house? If it stays the exit, there won't be anybody parked there, right?
They'll just keep moving.
But if she, if she, if they agreed to do an hours restriction so that there isn't a drive through open past nine, then you wouldn't have headlights on. After, you know, before nine o'clock in the summer anyway.
Are you going to put that in writing that if it's early, that's where that's going to be?
If that's how the motion is made.
It's a, it'll be a.
Go on this document and write it.
It'll be a restriction.
And what about me backing out of my driveway because no, there won't be right.
That's what, that's, I mean, that's state law, you know, you have two people coming to a stop sign, you have to follow laws, so, you know.
Driveways? It's actually, it is actually part of all of our, what they call the UDO, all of that. They do want things to match up so that you don't have people turning and then turning and that's what causes accidents. You two will be looking dead at each other to get the go ahead or go ahead where if it was like this, they could match it. Right.
And I thought that I had granted that driveway and it was offset.
That's if I can use.
There's a rule that says that because we have that in our, in our neighborhood, we're private neighborhood and the driveway is, on some of the houses come right and.
But in my neighborhood, all of them are offset.
Yeah, which is fine, but I'm just saying, I think it's not the law that you have to follow.
Then they didn't do it right.
Before they stop, you know, you get all the state laws, you know, right away, yield and somebody's coming out who stops first, you know, that's.
But you're right, backing up, it does make sense to not have to come across that traffic.
Oh, I, I like the fact that they're wanting to work with you on this.
I appreciate it.
And so are, are you all right with the drive through not being open past nine?
But we're still going to see what N dot says.
And we have to check on the sewer line with Sean, I mean.
Right.
Yeah, because of the two laterals.
Them and Shaw will have to deal with the sanitary. I mean, there are two, there are two laterals on that property and I, I don't, are you not going to use either of them? You have to create one. Are you going to have to create one? I don't know if one of them empties onto Terrace and one empties onto thirty nine.
They both empty, they both of them, um, I believe go on thirty nine.
Yeah, it's a both of them.
But the one that he cares proposing is Terrace and if not one, we have to make ninety in the, uh, middle of the road.
Right, well, you don't want to have to open the road up.
There's two perfectly good laterals. We just want to use one of them.
So he was asking for like, if we do that, we wanted to leave.
Right, well, the flow with two office buildings and, and have an ice cream shop.
No public rest.
Right, you may have to have three sewer bills.
You do, I think.
So that's something we were going to discuss. So we would, on water, uh, we would obviously want each, each to be metered separately. Water, so that's what they basically, that's what you basically sewer bill off of is the water.
In some municipalities, we don't have access to.
We don't have water meters on everything, so everything is.
Was most tempted.
Yeah.
So right now, the office space has to pay a separate one.
You guys just have a fee for sewer.
Whatever you're paying, it'd be a relative. All right, so I can put in these stipulations then, the drive through will not be open past nine.
Nine o'clock close.
If it stays where it at?
If the entrance stays where it's at.
Yes, like on the proposed one versus moving it now.
Exactly. It's the exit more than entrance, yes.
I don't even know what happened right now.
I can see the fans on my clothes.
Sounds like something great in the pavement.
It does. Oh, I just did that. Oh, that's, uh, he's writing. That's probably one of us picking up. That's probably what was picking up.
All right, and it will have to be contingent on N dot permit.
While he's writing, who made the motion?
Uh, I'm still writing here. I, I do need a motion, but I'm still writing here.
I didn't have a motion to close the public hearing. Well, we didn't. I had asked him about it.
This has to be contingent on securing an entry and no construction can start until, till that permit is secured. We've got that trouble all night before.
And also they want to let me move the driveway. We need to create that. Just there's something about my yard.
I presume we can close up here.
Uh, the nine o'clock thing is it's staying where it at. I'm not moving, closing it at night. Like, I feel like, okay. Okay, I got you saying like.
It's contingent on, but.
Because N dot doesn't need to approve it moving, so we word it now. They were, I was saying, if we moved it, N dot would have to tell me that's okay, like, I don't.
I'm, I'm surprised they're giving you your. I'm, I'm surprised they're giving you that honestly off of thirty-nine, so I don't think they're gonna.
Stay the lights on this way. If it stays where it's at, are you moving by enough?
Well, we've submitted all of it, they've not said anything.
And that's not been inserted.
N dot said, based on the information they, that they received regarding development, that there was nothing else for them to do.
It's their action. They, they have, they have.
Yeah.
Having you here, absolutely, I'm moving, so you can move it, that would be a motion.
Yeah, it's, they're currently reviewing your plans.
That's why I thought maybe it wasn't.
Alright, so, either or.
Yes.
Either you can move the exit before the resident acts it wants, or you can close at nine P M the, the drive-thru.
Correct.
And you want to add in that for a reason?
Did you want a motion to go ahead and close the public hearing?
Yeah, we want.
Okay, I move that we close the public here?
All in favor?
Uh, I.
Close.
We're gonna second on it, but it happened anyways, so you can put that in there, minutes down, I guess.
We broke the law.
What?
We broke the law, fires off.
We didn't.
We have to draw the balance back.
There you go. I'm just here to manage. I'm just, the papers are playing right now. Oh, yeah, we would be, this would be S meeting. Hope they win, I mean, yeah. They're so close. Sunday. Sir, I thought it was Thursday. What's today? I'm retired.
It's Tuesday, Jason has to be in Wednesday, I'm late there, so I already.
Okay, I thought it was Thursday, but, uh, I didn't know Sunday, they look like, you know, don't you care to win this thing? All you need is four, you need three more, that's it.
Alright, do you have any, any more discussion?
No.
I am good.
You don't care to make a motion? Do you think it involves, do not?
I move that we approve, as presented.
Second.
That's what he should get said, yeah.
Pardon?
No, I'm just asking, what is it that you're making a motion on?
With the.
What was added?
To approve with all the stipulations, they have seven variances that they have to, to get through the B Z A. The accident either moves the east or they close at nine P M the drive-thru.
It's contingent.
And the N dot permit has to be secured before construction can begin.
And we don't have to talk to Sean about the sewer thing?
No.
No, that's a later thing, that's it.
So I've already made a motion for this, so.
Second.
Oh, got a second.
Alright, motion made by Phil Fowler.
Is it tomorrow? It's Wednesday.
To approve.
Right, oh, yeah.
Seconded by Chad.
Let's just warn them out. Start putting three D's in.
Alright, I have a couple more of these here. Whereas the post-site plan as referenced above is, is not considered with the intent and purposes of the ordinances of the town of Monrovia. I say it is considered.
Yes.
We ought to do all through.
Yes, yes.
Does or does not advance the general welfare of the town of Monrovia, Indiana and the immediate neighborhood.
It does.
I, I say it does. Do you all agree on that?
Yes, I agree.
Alright. So, um, Eddie Menzel, I'm for. Chad for.
Four. Yeah, he said.
Kenny Meyer. Tammy Everett.
Two for.
Phil Fowler.
Yes.
Or Joe.
Four.
Robert Mitchell.
Four.
Alright, that's seven, four. One against.
Vada. Just drop fruits and fish. Go produce.
Do you wanna schedule, get stuff scheduled tomorrow for your busy day in July? It's impossible. Deadline by this weekend.
We're meeting in July. You gotta be curious yourself. You can still set up on July. That's right.
Right, second thing on our agenda is, uh, Eagle Point P D D amendment, which is, I'm so glad you asked.
I hope that we open the public here.
I said.
All in favor?
Uh.
The continuance of a public hearing from two months ago.
Right. Well, hey, again, I'm Adam Harrison with Grass and Man Development, and our entity here is Eagle Point Development L C. Got Mark and Brian Grass with me. For Timmy and Chad who weren't here last month, I'm sure you saw in the minutes or got an update. We came back last month, wanted to kinda have what we call more of a working session, we weren't looking for a vote, we just kinda wanted to come here and talk to plant commission about uh, the changes that we felt we needed uh, to make the project a better project. Um, there's, there's been some cost issues with the project just related to that terrain as you drive down thirty-nine, it's a, it's an interesting site. In the process, we had lost our builder who, who was the original person who took this through, uh, it was N V R Ryan Holmes. Um, they had brought this all the way through zoning, they got us involved, uh, the pricing was such that they could not make the project work, so they were out. Uh, so there were a lot of things that were specific in the original development plan that were specific to the Ryan product. Uh, our new builder that we've got that, that would like to be here is Arbor Holmes. Um, so we came here last month, I thought, uh, it was a very productive uh, exchange with uh, plant commission going through what, I believe there's, there's a few uh, changes, um, appear to be mostly minor based upon our discussion that we had here. Basically, we left with the feedback from you all, and this uh, design was really born from the feedback that we got from the plant commission members that were here uh, last month. So you've got a larger uh, drawing here in front of you, this is um, uh, plan that we came up with. Uh, just to kind of remind everybody, one of the big things was talking about this through road from thirty-nine to, to Union Church. Um, that was something that I know was important to plant commission there, uh, this redesign takes advantage of that. Uh, kind of uses the terrain to bring in, uh, so you don't have, as you can see, there's that, that kind of notch in there, so it doesn't turn into a bullet train, one straight line all the way through, um, but creates some connectivity that I think uh, is important uh, to the town of Monrovia. The, the other change that, that would be required with this new builder is Arbor doesn't have the two different kinds of products like Ryan Holmes did. Uh, they've got, their Arbor product, which hopefully everybody's seen, uh, we provided a, a Dropbox link, and I know there were some images. Um, uh, they've got a mix of two-story and one-story homes, uh, and they'll be mixed throughout based upon how they sell through. Um, so instead of having these two different sub areas, it'd just be one development uh, with building all the homes in there again with their Arbor product. In our original plan, there were ninety-eight fifty-five foot wide lots. I think two hundred and, uh, whatever, it'd be two hundred and sixty-two total lots, so a hundred and sixty-two of sixty-plus foot wide lots. We've switched up uh, to add a few more of the fifty-five, drop some of the sixties, again, more of a fifty-fifth mix. And part of that is again due to the terrain and trying to stay away from some of these big slopes that are gonna require retaining walls. And the other big thing was uh, the front yard setback, we understand the, in the original P U D, uh, it's a forty-foot front yard setback that's required. We came in for a men, amendment shortly thereafter and modified some of the radius to be thirty. And we were here talking to you guys last month and said, hey, we think we can get mostly forties, but there are some areas, we'll need some repeat to go down to thirty. Um, and as you can see through this, you can see in the yellow, the majority of the setbacks uh, are forty. There are some areas where due to the terrain, we moved it to thirty, but thirty will still accomplish uh, the, what I know is important from our discussion last time is the ability to get uh, cars in the driveway, not uh, breaching uh, the sidewalk or sticking onto the road. Uh, one thing I would wanna point out is this, this uh, through street from thirty-nine to Union Church would be a no parking uh, street. Um, so again, just wanna make sure you guys understand that.
I've got some questions about that through street.
Yeah.
There, there are two intersections that look to me like they should probably have four-way stop signs.
Okay, yeah, and those, I'll be honest with you, at, at, at this stage, we wouldn't show that level of detail just at the development plan stage. When we come back for, at this point, we'd have to come back for revised primary plat, or construction plans, that would have that level of detail. And through that technical advisory committee, if four-way stops are what, what is needed, then we'll abide by the town's ordinance and, and, and follow those things. But on this type of plan, we don't generally, like, we don't have where the sanitary is, we don't get into that level of detail on this plan.
In the first amendment that you asked for, the, the fire department had an issue with the curb radius.
Correct.
And determined that in some of those curbs, the curb would be painted yellow.
Yep.
So that people can not park on that curb.
Yeah, correct.
Now, this is a complete different drawing.
The se, the same, the same.
Principle or?
Same, same requirements will go into effect for this new plan, you have something there at that higher radius.
I like, I like, yeah, so here's, I noticed on this, so you don't have any, any driveways are gonna be coming out to that through.
Correct, nope, no progress feeding off of that.
But, no, no, that's, that's. No, no, I'm just saying that, 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 that works because it does give us a cross.
For me, I don't know about everyone else here, for me, that, that through street gives us better connectivity.
Yes, yeah, it does, I mean, that's what we heard, uh, or me at our working session last month, and we're happy we're, we're able to accomplish it, and I think it's gonna, I agree with you, it's gonna make the development, uh, I think, better for, for us, better for the town to have that connectivity. Regarding stops, I mean, clearly, as we get into tack, we'll work with the town on whatever requirements they need, and, and we'll proceed uh, with, with the town's recommendation on that. As you know, uh, regarding siding, because Ryan Holmes had their two separate products, one of them, uh, there was, I think, on sixty percent of the homes vinyl was allowed, forty percent weren't. Arbor's got all vinyl, uh, so we'd ask that all homes could be vinyl at minimum thickness of point zero four six, so it's not, it's a, a higher, you don't wanna go too high. If you go to a higher than point four six, you, you have very limited color schemes. Um, at point four four, some people think that's too thin, point four six is kind of a good sweet spot where it's thicker, you have a good color palette to be able to have. We, we, we will have what's called an inter-monotony uh, provision, um, it's still in the ordinance as it sits there today, but essentially you can't have the same home on either side of one home or across the street from any homes, and you really get limited colors, that makes it challenging to do.
I got a question about siding.
Sure.
Is there state regulations applicable for the thicknesses, like minimum thickness?
No.
Okay.
No, I mean, I think you can go down four-two, maybe three-eight, so four-six is, four-six is honestly, a lot of the, I think, went around the area, most places four-four is what they request for a minimum, four-six is a little bit thicker, again, still gives it a color, color, but for, for us, it's a kind of a trade saying, hey, we recognize they're gonna be vinyl, we'll step up to a higher grade vinyl. And we're not trying to dive to the bottom here at all, in any way, shape, or form. With this new layout, we also, I think it's important uh, to point out.
So there is a standard, a standard or is this?
It does state, like, a minimum, a minimum.
So since you're not the builder, uh, will you require Arbor to meet the spec that you?
Correct, that will, if you approve this, that'll be an approved part of the development plan, so they'll be bound by that, yes, a hundred percent.
Or are these shaded lots compared to the lighter lots?
Uh, the, the lighter lots are the fifty-five foot wide, the darker ones sixty-foot wide, the darker brown, I guess. Probably use some more delineation, but, but what you also get there, Tammy, it's important to understand, when you have a sixty-foot lot and a fifty-five-foot lot that are next to each other, it, from a street scape standpoint, all the homes are forty feet wide. So on some homes, you're gonna have a, a ten-foot separation between the house next to them, because they're on a sixty-foot wide lot rather than a fifty-five. And then you got a fifty-five next that may be seven and a half, but what it's gonna do on your street scape, it's not, it's not look like every single house is exactly seven and a half, seven and a half, seven and a half, seven and a half, be, well, fifteen. So, seven and a half each individual side yard, fifteen aggregate, because we're, it, we're through the sixties and fifty-fives, so you're gonna have different side yards. So again, it doesn't look like barracks, that's what we.
Will be twenty-three, forty-five.
Some will be, some will have greater separation, some will be the, the minimum, which is the seven and a half and fifteen aggregate. But the idea of, of dispersing the sixties and fifty-fives as we've done, it's not just because the color scheme look good, it's, it's really to help the streets, street scape. So you don't have a row where you just have fifteen, like, all the way down, I think it's monotonous, and for us, we wanna sell a beautiful neighborhood, and we really think uh, having these kind of laid out the way they do, I think will help, uh, help with that.
Oh, also, you have down, you know, that the fifty-five foot lots are a hundred and twenty-nine, sixty foot, like, a one thirty-one, but do you have a percentage on how many of these have thirty-foot setbacks and the percentage of, of them that are.
I, I don't, I mean, I can get that for you, there are limited places where it's thirty.
I think I see them.
I would tell you, it is probably less, yeah, less than thirty.
Yeah, it's, it's a, I mean, up, when you get, sorry, up on this north side, kind of around here, there are some thirties, but most, all these interior ones are forties.
See these west streets in the, you know, kind of the part of development by that corner, barracks thirty, and that's because of the slow coming up, down north, so.
So you think you're gonna be able to call them at a thirty percent?
Yes.
Or, or better?
Or better. The, the only thing that would be different, and I, I just wanna make sure everybody understands, on a corner lot where essentially you have two front yards, the side yard is, we're gonna, is, we're gonna stick with the traditional side yard, which is twenty-five feet, you know, something twenty-five, not, because if you have two forty coming in, a corner lot, you, there's gonna be no room for a building path, so.
Have enough for a shed.
Yes, so the front will, and, and the front yard, the actual real front yard will be at that forty or thirty, whatever, whatever it is, um.
Well, I mean, this, this, the request, requested setback of twenty-five feet.
Yeah, I changed that, yeah, well, sorry, what we originally, did I say twenty-five? Oh, no, I said twenty-five on the corner lots, I think is what I sent you. So. Originally, so the new request is, is what you see here, which is primarily forty-foot setbacks, some thirty due to the terrain, and then on some corner lots, wherever the front yard is, that'd be thirty or forty as indicated, but then the side yard would be just a normal twenty-five.
So I can put in a stipulation.
Yeah, and I can have, yeah, sorry.
That mi, minimum front, front yard setback will be thirty.
Correct. The other thing I want. Correct. The other thing I want to say.
We just talked, it was thirty-five percent.
We are, it may not sound like a lot, but I think our, our road. Uh, linear feet of road went down about like twenty-five hundred feet. One thousand? I thought it was more than one thousand. Okay, sorry. A thousand feet, that's just less. Once, once the whole neighborhood's turned over to the municipality, you're taking care of these roads. That's the people's road you have to take care of. Uh, from a maintenance standpoint, may not sound like a big deal. It's a big cost savings to us to have less road. And it's a big cost savings to the municipality to have less road to maintain. Yeah, and maintenance and patching and curb and all that stuff that comes with it down the road from a maintenance standpoint. So. Although, we really feel like we, we heard, we heard what everybody said at that last meeting. We think we put a plan together that is. Significantly better than the original plan. Uh, we're able to accomplish this through street, but I think. Certainly has some, some good value uh, to the town. Um, and we'd ask that you approve this amendment. And uh, I've got some of these things here, Eddie, if this makes.
Well, some, some of the photos that I looked at. Of the homes.
Uh-huh.
A, a lot of the homes have masonry on them.
They do.
Halfway out, some of them all the way up to the base.
They do.
There'd be no masonry.
But there's no requirement for that?
Well, all, what we're asking, what we're asking is as part of this, that, that, the homes that. You've seen in part of your packet, that those are the homes that are approved from a, from an architectural style. So yes, they have brick.
But is there a requirement that it has to have so much brick or?
There isn't because I don't know what people. I'm not sure that Arbor, I mean, most, I, I'm not sure that they have a lot of products that sell without some brick facade. Um, whether or not we can, we could probably commit to some level.
I think we should have some type of brick on the front of every one of them. That's my.
When we bought our home through C P Morgan, we were, we've been in Homestead since oh-seven. On our walkthrough, when we decided on our front plans and everything. Our elevations, correct. And we had the choice of either going vinyl, we could do a little brick, we could do a lot of brick, you know, that was. That was the builder's choice. It was an option that they could choose, and of course it was more money.
Yeah.
But, you know, we decided not to do any vinyl because of the elevation we choose. I mean, it was all vinyl because of our. Now, like you said, it was an option there, and as long as it's an option for, with, through Arbor. I, I don't have a, if, if somebody chooses an all-vino facade.
I think the neighborhood stays nicer if you have some type of brick on each.
Well, one of the things, I guess.
A neighborhood stays nicer depending on who owns the property.
That's it. I, I, one of the things I would.
Yeah, and I drive through around town and I see a lot of places that are brick that are, that look like crap.
Um, the houses, the neighborhoods that I see, when they're total vinyl, they don't hold up well. They don't, they don't hold up.
But one of the things I would say, and I think when we sent the whole Dropbox link that was. All their things, that's not, we will, Mark himself chooses. Every elevation that he will allow to be built in this neighborhood. So you've seen the whole palette. All of those aren't getting through him. Because again, you have to remember, we have to take as a company and sell lots. To sell homes and sell lots, so.
That'd be too much to ask, but we have.
Minimum requirement.
For what? For a certain percentage of stone or brick.
Just to.
Are we talking about just one building or the entire plant? Are we talking about just the ones they're building or are we talking about the entire plant?
A lot of neighborhoods do have that requirement and those are the neighborhoods that stay nice. So that's why I was just thinking if they were going to bring a vinyl neighborhood in here, why not have some type of a. Of a requirement that you have some pieces of brick on it at least so it looks.
Well, I don't think you have to say brick.
Masonry would be.
Well, even though a lot of the. People want character. And they, you guys are builders, you know that they have the faux. Uh, brick look that's still a vinyl panel. That's what I make.
Yeah, they probably won't use that. They'll either do brick or they'll do siding or stone. Stone, brick or siding is going to be the three options. So let, so let me go, let me take you back a little bit, so. Well, so in the, in the original, in the original P U D that was approved, the, the section that was the two-story product was simply Ryan product. That was all vinyl without any requirement for masonry. So the, the. The nice thing of the palette that Arbor has, when you look through that Dropbox link or at least ones that we showed you, there's a lot of. I mean, I'd say, percentages might be off because I'm going off the top of my head, but seventy-five percent of the homes have got some masonry on. For people to choose from like Bob was saying.
And each neighborhood can be different though. I mean, some of them require that and other ones still.
Right. And I, and I don't think, I mean, I don't think it's right to require it in this setup.
Well, I think that we as people in Monrovia want a cheap neighborhood going in there.
Well, I get you, but there already was already approval for, you know.
A section.
So it's already approved for all vinyl?
It was already approved for all vinyl.
Is it already approved for all vinyl?
Yes.
A section.
Sixty percent of the homes were allowed to be.
Allowed to be all vinyl. And then, so we do have a minimum. We have, you have forty percent that have to be some type of masonry.
The other ones just. But, but I think.
Can I ask before you go any further, how much of an additional cost is, is any kind of stone that's up? That you're going ahead and put on the elevation? Going to cost?
Were you talking even just on a Wayne Scott?
Yeah, exactly. What do you, how much more does that add to a home? I mean, as far as cost, you guys. I mean, if, 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 I, I'm not talking about the entire building being, but I'm saying.
Right.
I think that's, that would.
We have, that's. Most of us, half of us live over there. So when they're going, going building the houses. From what I've seen, the new parts, you know, I had the same as Bob and everybody else had a choice between brick and all that stuff. Well, when the builder comes up and is building houses, the builder has the choice, you know, if nobody's bought these, I'm going to build this, this, this. I'm going to build some bricks, I'm going to build some two, I'm going to build ranch, I'm going to build this. And then people that come and say, ooh, I want to build and have a choice. I mean, we've had a choice in there and, you know, it's, a lot of people are doing brick anyway. I don't.
I know, but you're talking about somebody's choice as opposed to a minimum requirement, which to me keeps the neighborhood nice. I'm just suggesting it. I'm not, I'm sorry if you guys don't agree with. And I've seen a lot of nice sizes, houses that are all vinyl, but they tend to be less. Which means that we.
Well, and that's, that's the thing is architecture is different when you, especially when you look at that palette. I mean, some of those homes are kind of set up to be. All siding homes, right, from an aesthetics perspective.
But I feel like, I mean, me as a, as a towns person in Monrovia, I feel like I don't want another vinyl housing complex in our town.
What if we said, what if we just said half the homes?
But we're already approved, so I don't have a choice.
What if we just said half the homes would at least have a Wayne Scott of some masonry in the front?
What are you saying is a Wayne Scott, this much space?
Well, it generally goes up to the first, to the first. Goes up to the first window. Yeah.
First one?
First windows.
A lot of houses do that.
Yeah, it's. I would agree to that.
Says that people aren't going to move to and keep them, and they're not going to market catches, they're not going to move out, leave a whole bunch of.
So, and I think, I think, Lord, what you'll see is, we'll, we'll tell the builder, hey, fifty percent of them will have to have a Wayne Scott. I think you're going to end up seeing the majority of the homes are going to have some level of brick or masonry on the front. That's just because that's the homes they built.
Yeah, didn't quite a few of the elevations from the packet?
Yeah, they do. They just do.
Well, and the elevation, some of them would show all vinyl, then a different elevation would show all brick, some half brick.
Right. And I gotta be honest with you. Look, I, my taste, I look at those, I look at the elevations and to me, I, I. I think the ones that have some masonry are, are more favorable to me. There are some people who don't. So we want to allow people to have some choice. But we definitely want to, want to appease uh, and make sure we're, we're hitting standards that, that you're comfortable with and we'd be happy to, happy to do that.
You, you're, you're comfortable with fifty-four percent of the homes must have some.
Wayne Scott, masonry on Wayne Scott.
On the street side.
Correct.
Right. Yeah, it's on the elevation. Yeah, a hundred percent fine to that.
But I don't know about a Wayne's coating because that's just a small area. It said to the bottom of the first window.
That's, that's the definition of Wayne Scott. So if you want to say to the, to the first window, we're happy to say that, however you want to word it.
Thinking more like half of the first story.
I just don't know that their, that all their elevations, even the ones with masonry have to go that far up.
I don't agree with that. And also the, the original P V. Have bricker stone, there was only a Wayne Scott.
Yeah, I wasn't involved in that.
I understand that, that's what.
But I do understand. So, so basically if it's already approved, then they have the choice to.
No, if they want any changes, then we have to.
Yeah.
Okay, so we do right now is the time to speak up and say we want some brick on.
Happy to do, we're happy to do that.
When we talked about this, the time that I was here, we said we never want houses as close as they are and we said ever again. And I come back and what is this? Fifteen foot apart?
Well, not all of them are going to be fifteen.
Stayed the same, some of them will be.
Some of them will be, will be, if you have two sixties next to each other, you'll have a forty foot, you have twenty feet between the houses. Uh, and seventeen-five on the majority of them because we have those mixes, not going to be just fifteen. The way that, the way that this development plan we're asking you to approve today with these changes. There's, there's only a couple, couple areas, especially bordering Union Church, that you have a row of just. That where you'll have a row of some six or seven homes in a row that are fifteens, but the rest of the entire neighborhood is going to either be, I mean, there's runs of. There's runs in the middle, there are just sixties where you'll have twenty feet apart every one of those homes. The other ones where it's a fifty-five and a sixty, you'll have seventeen and a half between the two homes. So you're getting, you are getting more than what was in the original P V, which was just straight seven and a half and fifteen all the way around.
And how far apart are the ones in next to?
Well, some of the first section, section two.
Some of them are, some of them are six, six and twelve.
I thought there might be four sections where they're, they're, they're ten feet apart.
Yeah.
They're actually a little farther apart than what Homestead is.
Yeah, these will be at least, at least five and a half feet, well, three feet. At least three feet bigger from their smallest to the fifteen to twelve. And then they've got some that are just ten. We're going to be a fifteen at a minimum, but again, the majority of them are going to be seventeen and a half. There's going to be a handful of them that are twenty.
Section eight, which is south of Rotary, that big area in there. It has one street that has like ten homes on it that are fifteen feet apart and then the rest of them. Now, they're ten feet apart and then the rest of those are all fifteen feet apart or grades. And the remain, they, they can't build anything close to the fifteen feet apart for the, the entire rest of.
And I thought we were trying to get to where everything was at least twenty foot apart.
Well, I'd like to see that, but it already, it's already been approved. For some of them to be fifteen feet apart.
That's where I'm confused. What has been approved? I mean, as far as what he's asking for today?
Uh, I can tell you what I'm asking for change, to change.
Yeah, thank you.
First of all, what I'm, we're asking for is to approve this new layout. That's number one. Uh, approve the Arbor product, number two. Uh, with this development, it comes the adding of that through street. Changing it from the two separate residential districts to just one because we don't have the two separate. Definitively separate products that we have before. So removing the two separate ones and just having one set of standards. Allowing the front yard setback to be forty, but reduced to thirty in the areas just due to the terrain. And I can tell you, we spent a lot of time looking at this terrain to make sure that where we have thirties was necessary and not for any other reason other than. To have to build retaining walls. I mean, think about the cost of some of these homes, if you then got a retaining wall on the back of every home, um, would be crazy. Uh, allowing vinyl through the whole subdivision.
Yeah, that's the one I wanted.
And now we'll modify that though to say at least half the homes have to have a minimum Wayne Scott of masonry. Uh, and those are the only changes other than that.
I'd like to see a little bit more.
I, I think, I, I think, I totally get what you're saying. I think you're going to be pleasantly surprised when you see what we approve from their elevations of that large deck. Which again is, I think you're going to end up seeing way more brick than what we're sitting here talking about. That's why I'm not concerned. You know, the Wayne Scott, I think, again, I think half the homes are going to have it anyway, at, at a minimum. But, but again, I don't want to pigeonhole a buyer in the end who may have a taste that's different than mine.
And that's, yeah.
A buyer who may have a budget that doesn't.
Exactly, exactly.
They have a lot of them that can't afford to go for it.
You can't chastise people because they can.
No, I'm not saying that I'm chastising anyone.
Some people, if you're tied on a payment, that five thousand bucks is what, thirty-five, forty dollars? Uh, you know, may, probably more than that now, probably sixty bucks a month.
There's a lot giving cost too.
They're expensive lots.
Mine was eight thousand dollars back to two thousand and six.
Yeah, at a, at a zero plus. Yeah. So with all that, I guess the request would be that you. Hopefully your motion would be to approve the new development plan and the new standards uh, that we've outlined here today that are modified from the original development plan.
You know, was your last thing, because I kind of interrupted.
Correct. Well, and then the garage. We say garage of a minimum of four hundred square feet? It, it was, they, it didn't have, it didn't have that, it had a, uh, it had a percentage of the facade, which I think was like. Fifty-five percent were asking for that. On just Arbor's new product that's different from N V R's. The product that you see is the product you're going to get. So I'm not trying to do legal semantics with you by trying to sneak words in.
Oh, no.
The product you get is going to be the product that, that you've seen. So it's just saying a minimum of four hundred square feet. And can't be more than fifty percent of the front facade. So you're not going to have a big garage that happens to have a front. Is, you know, and I've seen some plans like that. Yeah, I've seen some of those. And, and I'll be honest with you, we met, we met with Eddie, we met with Eddie, um. I think Phil, you were there too, when we had our product there, like thirty-foot wide product, and it literally.
Oh, yeah.
It looked like, it looked like a garage with two eyes. I mean, we saw it and we're like. Yeah, so no, this, Arbor's, they're building a product in two subdivisions we're doing now. They still like hotcakes, they look great. Sure. Scottsdale Estates, which is in uh, Greenwood. And then Edgewood Preserve, which is in Franklin Township. Edgewood Preserve.
Where in Franklin Township is that?
It's off of Ed, Edbrook Garage. If you take seventy-four and get off at Acton Road.
I know where that is.
Just slip around on Edgewood Road and you'll run right into it.
I used to live up there.
Okay. Yeah, it's right off of Edgewood.
Yeah, near Acton, okay.
Yeah, or Ed, Edwood, sorry. Edwood Road right off the interstate.
Okay, all right. Oh, I just.
But I think, I mean, I was, I just drove through them a couple days ago, but. I'm proud to, proud to be affiliated with it. It looks great.
Yeah, I do have one question about, about the through road. Okay, the second four-way from the west would be the one on the interior.
The one in the middle?
In the middle, correct.
I got you.
All right. If you're coming from the south and you're pulling up to that four-way, because of the angle on the east side of that intersection.
Yeah.
Having that at an angle right away, is that going to somewhat hinder? But the, however, there is one intersection in Monrovia or Homestead that I use. That it, it's not, it's uncomfortable. It has sometimes, it's difficult to see. Yeah. Now, would, how difficult would, this is just, I mean, think, if that was. You know, maybe the a hundred feet straight going to the east before it starts to curve around. If that was a little straighter at, just at going a little farther east.
Yeah, that could possibly happen. What I, I guess, the way, the way I'd word it to you, Bob, is we can, again, this level of plan is not a final engineered plan. So as we come through TAC and we're working with, with staff and your engineers, we'll, we'll work with them to make that as safe as humanly possible.
I, I think there's something in the ordinance that, that, that states that an intersection has to be at least fifty feet from a curve.
Yeah, so we'll work with staff as we go through TAC and we get to, like, I always kind of say, this is a thirty thousand foot view, and when we come back here for our next set of plans, it'll be a lot closer to the ground.
There's a good chance that that could be straightened out just a little, I'm not saying straight through, but just straighten it out a little bit.
Yeah, we've got flexibility to work with them.
Okay. That's great. So would that, would that, I mean, just, I know this is for later date, but if that was straightened down a little bit, would that be over the top of that water line then? Is what you're possibly? Oh, okay.
Most thoroughfares are built on, I mean, the water line, they've been accessed.
Yeah.
The water being right in the road.
Entryways or.
No, as long as, as long as that could possibly be straightened out just a little bit, I, I don't have a problem.
We'll work with staff and, and your engineers to make sure we make that the safe, a safe four-way intersection.
A lot of open space on that.
Right, yeah.
Commercial space, like, how big are these?
We haven't laid out the buildings yet, it's a, that whole area's about, about eleven acres, including the, where the pond is. So figure the pond's two acre pond, maybe. Yeah, twelve thousand total. So we've got some medical use. And that's, we, we heard from you guys last time that clearly medical use of some level would be preferred, that's, that would be a great step for us. We're not in the, in the commercial real estate business, so, um.
What's the setback off of thirty-nine from? Like, if this is.
It's gotta be a, it's gotta at least a six, are you talking about like the right-of-way, I don't know what the right-of-way is, but, but we'll, we'll have to dedicate right-of-way there for you, so there'll be, it, it makes, I guess it's. Yeah, 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 that stuff's already, that stuff's already been permitted and worked through, yeah. So what this approval will allow us to do is go back to our engineer and just redo, redo our, our, we've already got our permits for the, we're not changing the entry design or any permits we already have, with all the turn lanes and everything.
This is basically the housing.
Correct.
The commercial will have to have its own access.
Correct.
Just kind of the way, the way it sits out there.
Yeah, come off of our entrance and break off into two. And they'll have to come here, whoever we end up owning those that we, I prefer to sell those to somebody that can develop, that, that's what they do for a living, they're gonna have to come here for site plan, they're gonna have to come here for TAC and all their other plans, you're gonna get several bites at that same apple, similar to what, what you had here earlier. So they'll have to come back through for all their plans, uh, when, when we get down to that level of detail.
I really would like some time to look at previous PD, I can understand that they put out what they want for amendments, but I would like to have it in my hands and be able to compare, and I definitely am concerned with the fifteen foot. So I would move to table this at least until next month, and so I personally know I need some more time.
I'll second that, is that a motion? I'll second that motion. I don't think we should vote on anything until we all understand this better.
I do. I wish I could explain it better.
You weren't asking us to anyway, you probably have to come back, right?
No, no, we were asking for a vote, we were definitely asking for a vote today, yeah. Yeah, we gotta keep, we gotta keep moving, so. With, with a upgraded plan, with more detail, as we start working through modifications of those plans, those go through several layers of your engineer going back and forth with us. So we're just trying to get this new development plan approved, so we can start getting a contract with Arbor and get going.
We have a, I guess we have to close the public hearing before we can go ahead and vote, I think we vote during the public hearing. No, but I understand, you want to go ahead and do that, you want, I'll move to close it, we, we close the public hearing. I'll second. I just move to close the public hearing, we got a second.
All in favor?
Okay, then, I guess.
I'd like to make a motion to table until the next meeting, so that we can do information presented to make an educated decision.
I'll second that.
Alright, motion's been made, second to table, till next month.
Yeah, you, you made the second, yeah, yeah.
No.
A vote against table, that's one.
Chad.
The motion is to table. Yes.
I don't know. So, one, two, three, four, against, three, four. So, motion dies.
Where do we go from here?
Well, I don't know, someone else care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the changes to the, that they request for. The, the pod is. To, for what they're requesting to move the project along. With, and that, that's with the stipulation of the fifty percent, you know.
That it's gonna be Arbor instead of Thru Street, two separate products, they're gonna remove one product. Forty, thirty setbacks. From forty to some thirty.
Then I'll make a motion to send a favorable recommendation to the town council for the requested changes. Along the stipulation of the.
You know, now is our time where we can have some control over this and, and request that we act. They're, they're even agreeable to giving us brick requirements. So now's our time to do that, we can't do that later if they agree with it.
Right, I thought they said that they were agreeable to fifty percent of all of that.
There's the Wayne's.
Yeah, he said it's gonna stipulate.
Yeah.
That was just a range.
Well, just with, the.
It's only fifty percent of the neighborhood, so they could sell at once that they could sell to people.
That, and that is the buyer, I still say that should be the buyer's choice, so my, I will make that motion with the stipulations that we talked about.
So we're not requesting that they have some type of fair?
Well, that's. Yeah, that's, that's, plus they're. And if you looked at the product that they're selling, a lot of the product Arbor Homes is offering has brick, is more than vinyl.
I see a lot of them, and, and some of them are really nice, but then the ones that don't, that have all vinyl, they're not really nice, so.
Fifty percent of the homes to have masonry on the front.
I kind of wanted to see the front facade on fifty percent.
We committed to the Wayne's.
I brought forty percent on it.
We've already, there's already been a first and a second, and we already committed to the Wayne's, so, and the public hearing's closed, I don't know what I'm gonna do, I'm sure.
You guys have your choice now, you're going it.
Alright, so Bob Nichols made a motion to send a favorable recommendation. Who seconded it?
Kenny Meyer. Are you going to put them text amendments that they had? This here? It's gonna be to answer the, you can point text.
No, I, I think that's old, I think that was back until, okay, two meetings ago.
I thought you were, yeah, but I thought you were talking.
I think Eddie's got all of them.
Yeah, we already got all of them.
Alright, the motion's been made by Robert Nichols, seconded by Kenny Meyer, to send a favorable recommendation to the town council. And for Chad.
Against.
Kenny.
Against.
Again. Laurie.
Obviously against. I still think we need to work this out better. But I guess if you guys don't agree, then you, you outnumber me, I'm fine with that. Yeah, yeah.
President, over there, against, so.
That's a good point.
That's four, four, three, again.
Thank you guys very much.
I've got to consider it again. No, it's not, it's not a fair. You probably got under that stack paper. Consideration of minutes.
Alright, consideration of minutes.
The minutes be approved after present.
All in favor? Town council report, what does it email or mistakes in it?
I was at a town council meeting.
It's already been updated, it's already taken care of, and everything's fixed. Guys, get into the town council, it'll all be fixed very soon.
I did see a couple of errors, though, not just the, but I'm just saying, we don't need to talk about it, we can do that outside of us.
How does it have nothing to do with us?
The one in front of you has the old stuff that isn't correct, is all I'm saying.
Mr. President?
How does it have nothing to do with the plan?
Because the minutes haven't been approved.
Okay, well, they always end up in the package, so.
Yeah, they have been approved, and it was a good catch, but it has nothing to do with the plane commission.
Yeah. And I knew when I sent that email that we honestly don't do town council stuff, but I had it in front of me, and I thought, I'm not gonna not say anything when it's.
Yeah, we're in the public.
Well, that's been heard by the councilmen.
Yeah, they shouldn't be, this is a town council report, that's what I was told to provide. If you want to change that, I've been stopping putting it, it's all wrong now, because we'll see it anyway, it's just.
What you would do would be taking away our right to find that.
But it's included to be the minutes that were approved, not minutes that haven't even been. That's what I'm saying.
Oh, you may want to give them to us after they've been approved, what if nobody were talking about it? Then it would have been the records wrong.
So those really aren't the, the minutes that you're talking about in your email, aren't the minutes that we would be discussing anyway?
In ours, yeah, in ours.
Yeah, because you don't approve minutes for a meeting until the following month when you meet again, so, yeah, it's kind of a, instead, I guess we could get the April ones instead of the May ones.
Well, that doesn't make sense, because I, I can get a copy of that myself on my website, you know what I'm saying? I'm talking about before they're approved, so you're saying you're not gonna send them to us before we get approved?
I will do whatever you guys want to do.
I think we should still have them, so that we have a voice in it, that's why, we, but I mean, we don't have control over it, because it's the town council, but we at least.
Well, it says informational purposes, I think so.
That's exactly what, that's all I'm saying, is, is to keep everybody on the plane commission who wasn't at the town council meeting up to date. And minutes are to be approved by the members of the. So they should not have been shared with anybody outside of being approved, once they're approved, then those minutes should be shared.
Okay, but, yeah, I agree with John that, but what happens if they're wrong and the town council approves them? Then what recourse do we have?
Well, the doctor makes a bad decision in doing operations, the same thing.
I'm like, yeah, Laurie, I don't believe you can catch every error in the world, but you could obviously.
You can, you could do it at the town council meeting.
So you could go to the town council meeting and say, hey, I think the minutes are wrong.
Yeah, you, that's absolutely.
Is that how you decide then, or to, to make the record right? Why do you make the record right when it comes to?
Maybe you could have confidence in the town council members to catch it also.
Also, that, that does bring up one little thing, that's maybe something we have to address at town council meeting. If minutes are not approved, then are they going online already for people to see?
They don't go online until we get the signature?
Got it.
This is just to let you know ahead of time what happened last meeting.
Alright, planning of the report, we have one sign from it, which we discussed. For the choice of. Six, single family. Then we've got an improvement from it, and that's. Nancy's hardware, got an electric permit.
Oh, is it, is that the taco truck?
Why would they be getting a permit for the taco truck?
Well, she put a power service on that light pole there. On the corner of the lot, for a meter base, and.
Will we give her a permit for that?
Give them an electrical permit to, to put up the power on that pole.
On the break of the law.
Yeah.
How does that fall within our UVO, and why would that?
Well, you know, I don't know how it falls within our UVO, there was a temporary service there at some point in time. They, they use the same pole, they just change all the components, put the components on the pole.
Didn't the people sell that piece of property, didn't they have it?
So you're changing existing, you don't have to go, I mean. That's around, I mean, if you're putting in something new, you know, that light switch on that wall right there, if it wasn't there, you gotta. Last thing you're gonna do is there, and the whole, you're just replacing it, is it something that the town has to, I mean, get permitted redo it, but, I mean. Is it existing, you know, I mean, you're not changing anything, you're just.
What, what was it there for, is it for the festival?
Well, I don't know, it was the festival, it was a few, few years ago. But, the reason that I approved them to have an electric permit is because people were complaining about the generator running over there all the time.
Which is another reason that taco trucks shouldn't be part of it.
I, I actually do agree the taco trucks can watch it.
If it was once a week, it's okay, twice a week, I could live with it.
Like even with Mayberry Truck, they may move it, like she needs to, it needs to go home at night, it should not be part of her business. On a vacant lot, it doesn't have zoning for that.
And it's, they're not paying taxes for that, from what I understand, even though it's a commercial property, it's being taxed as a piece of vacant land.
I'm a taco, I am, but that's running electric, and there's something else you have on Facebook, orders or something, or. It's getting out of, it's, she's running the business out of a truck, and that is sidestepping the board of health and all of that.
And that means that anybody, if we were to get out of control, anybody in this town could park it, if they're commercially on that main level, they could park it, we'd park there.
Well, the other truck's not the only issue on that lot, what's that power thing out there? The, the tent. I mean, that shouldn't probably have been permitted.
I wanted to bring up also, I mean, since you brought, since we're talking about the taco truck, like during the festival, we have all those trucks that are out there, the food trucks, and they get a permit, I, I don't know if we've been giving them. But they, they're out there and they hook up for so long, and they, I believe they're staying inspected as well, too, I don't know if this one or not, but.
Well, at festivals.
How is the festival done?
Because it's only a period of time, it's not a day only.
Right, it's, it's, it's limited in scope.
I just want to understand.
It's just an event, the festival's an event, so they're part of that.
But if it's land, Nancy's land, can't she just go ahead and do it as it?
Not necessarily. If it's being taxed as vacant land, then it shouldn't be selling things on it, you know, if you wanna get it, someone's just selling, you know, to have your, have a voting.
I, I would think that food trucks should require pedals.
Yeah.
And the, the plant stand, or whatever that temp is, flower shop.
But we don't count that.
Should have a pedal.
That's part of Nancy's business, I think that's included in Nancy's business, but she's just somebody that Nancy is taking a portion of herself, and some Nancy's.
I think it's, it's, I think it's an employee, Nancy.
I've heard rumors, so.
Yeah.
I know you're hot truth, but she's told some people that she depends on having a flea market there, and putting several little shipping containers on that lot where people stole their stuff in.
See what I mean, it just keeps.
We don't have a permit, we don't have a permit.
If you guys don't have a justice, suppose we had a process that issued permits like Speedway does. You know, they issue permits, if you wanna tell someone on the street you can, but you gotta get a permit.
Right, I believe the.
And then, yeah, I'm just telling the right, you know, that you're.
I believe that the UVO requires that, but I don't know that, that we have forms for people to fill out.
I don't think we have.
And got Adam Henderson to fill out some document to allow him to have food trucks on Friday night.
It's Friday night event.
Yeah, which I'm fine with Friday night, I'm not, I'm not totally bothered about that right now. But I, I don't think it should be a daily occurrence, it cheapens our town, it's just my opinion. I think if we had some kind of process where you had to pick each business in town, because I've been in many municipalities where each business in town, and that would include me, too. As, would have to have a permit, I used to pay these hundred dollars a year, every year, just Speedway, when I had my offices, Speedway.
Marion is looking into that.
Yeah, because I.
Oh, is she?
And that would solve the problem of these food trucks, and also the shipping thing, right?
Right, I, I, I would think that anyone that's gonna have a business here should, the town should know that they're gonna have the business.
Right.
I mean, I'm not saying that we should deny them the right to have a business.
But there should be some type of approval.
Right, we, we should know what types of businesses are in the town, and sometimes we don't. Businesses change, someone will, will close a business, and somebody else will open a business, and. We're clueless, I don't even know whether we got a tattoo shop.
And one thing that was in other municipalities, it's also about fire control, because they have, they used to have us get our buildings suspended once a year. To cross anything, just the permit price, you know, and then that way we now, we're adhering to the safety standards of the, of the state, you know, right? How do we know that it's even, that the food trucks are gonna, adhering to the health department's safety standards?
Well, we don't unless someone calls the health department.
Well, don't, don't they have to display their, the license and certifications, isn't it supposed to be displayed?
There is something up on the wall on the corner, but I can go over and read it with anybody.
I, I think they have to, it has to be out in, in sight of, you know, customers are, you know, it's gotta be visible, I think, actually.
Plus they have that, they can really go out and sell next inspection, unless it's random.
And like, did, did somebody, the, the county is working on that?
The state is trying to come up with a way to permit food trucks, because they go all over, so that they are still monitored. And not, you know, they don't have to pay for permits in every town, because that gets difficult for them to find out exactly what the policies are in each town, so. They are working on that, it isn't done yet, and that's why I initially said, let either, you know, it's just a phase, but when she's getting electrical ready, that's not okay. That's, she's not building, she's not following any codes, she's not zoned for that. I, I'm sorry, I just disagree that she should not have a permit for that purpose, because she is not zoned for that purpose on that lot.
It is a commercial zoning, Marion, but it's, it's also shows as a vacant lot, it's, I mean, it shows on the tax record as a vacant lot.
Oh, I'm just asking, even if the power was over there, I mean, I'm just asking.
I didn't know the power was already there.
From where we're at here, but, I mean, we're talking about the electricity, no one's doing anything about food thing being over there. I mean, I mean, whose place is it to, to go to Nancy and say, hey, that food truck can't be there?
Bob Marley's. Oh, and that's why.
Honestly, who does this job is it?
Yeah.
You know, I, I mean, I gave them an electrical permit because Marion had people screaming at her, but they were tired of hearing that generator run.
So we should have made a move the taco truck, instead of giving them an electrical permit. I mean, I'm not saying.
I agree, this is, this is, on you giving electrical permit starts way before that. I agree a hundred percent that, you know, there ought to be a business license or something that.
Some type of permit.
It's.
But we don't have anything like that in place right now.
But we need to set something.
But, it's just like that.
Make me correct into that statement, because we actually do have it in place, it's part of our UVO, we haven't been enforcing.
And it's, it's just like, somebody opens up a business in the house, and depending on what, you know, they, they, they backflow the water on that.
Yeah, so that wouldn't that be an ordinance violation, that would go in front of the.
Marion is speaking on that, for sure.
Yeah, what needs to.
What was the backflow thing?
Backflow. On the water line, we'll keep.
I'm not real happy, I'm telling you why I'm not real happy.
Every business has, has three, or three check. Uh, yearly. I mean, I know most towns go water, but I don't know if they check or. But, I mean, that's theirs, and that's why they. People have.
So I just.
You know, you're outside, possibly have a. And then if you're not spraying weed in the field, and a fire truck down the road hooks a hose to it, and we're sending water, if you pull that pin back in there, if you don't, if you're outside, that's a bad. Well, it's the same thing in the business, if they're in there, and. I know Tuesday there, like a few, they had one there, but they're in there, doing their thing, involving themselves.
If then they, if the water is pulling it out.
I, I don't. Somebody else.
And we want, we want to.
When they have a. Really. But they come into business, lots of.
I still, I still support.
They have their, their backflow, basically, documented, old access.
Old, old business, anyone have the old business?
I'll be upset, man, two, only two more years.
New business? I'm gonna wanna make a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn. I'll second.
Got four seconds.
All in favor?
Now you pose if you want.
I don't think there should be.
Turn the mics off.
Donald's gonna disconnect this from you two.
Yep. Thank you, sir, for all your efforts on our app.
I'm running every month.
No, I appreciate it, thank you.
You can send me feedback, you can send me an email, something on it.
You want these pictures back?
I can just leave them there.
Well, okay.
I'll take it personally.
Alright, thank you so much, Don, appreciate it.
You did a great job, Donald.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
I do have some of the both, these areas, that was really good, I'm just not able to get to the other part of the hill.